I'd like to call this November 13th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. Thank you all for coming tonight. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Board members still have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next, will you please rise if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move on into our recognition and presentations portion of the meeting. We're going to begin with school recognitions. Mr. Rad Danzy will present the Brittany Lamb and Kelly Coggedale Character Counts and the Volunteer Student of the Month.
Chair Lohr, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, and guests in our auditorium this evening, welcome to Spotswood High School for tonight's meeting. But before presenting our character counts and volunteer recognitions, I would like to once again thank you all very much for the opportunity to be the principal of Spotswood High School. It has been a joy to be here and again, to be allowed to do that each year, to work with such a wonderful community. I am extremely grateful, so thank you for that. And also, I guess I have been here a while, when two members of the board are former students, so wow, alright. This is one of my favorite things to do each year. We get to recognize students for being outstanding citizens, and we get to select a parent who has gone above and beyond to help our students succeed and give us the help that we need. So I'll first ask that Jocelyn Alvarez, please join me at the podium. Spotswood High School is excited to present Jocelyn Alvarez as a recipient of the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggedale Character Council Award. I have had the honor of watching Jocelyn grow into a strong and confident young lady who truly values those around her and who continuously strives to make Spotswood a safe and caring community for all students. Her care for her school community came to the forefront during the 2023, excuse me, 22-23 school year, when she was a member of the Safe and Caring School Project. In this group, Jocelyn was a leader and a strong advocate for people building additional support for our newcomer EL students. She proposed ideas to assist a, excuse me, a community of students who are not only new to Spotswood but new to the United States. Her passion and dedication to the Safe and Caring School Project are integral to our mission to create a strong learning environment. School librarian Amy Johnson, the faculty advisor for this project, stated, "Jocelyn is the reason I am here. I want to work with students in a meaningful way, not for grades or other accolades. Her reward is intrinsic caring, and that motivates me as an educator." When asking her teachers to share thoughts about Jocelyn, they wrote glowing words describing her as a kind, caring, and hardworking student. English teacher Charlene Schoenhardt shared, "Jocelyn is a wonderful person. She is always concerned about her community, her classmates, and her schoolwork. She was a joy to have in class, and I've also enjoyed seeing her grow as a person these last few years to come over the shell a little and get more involved here at Spotswood." These thoughts were echoed by our Spanish teacher, Diana Neves. I got to know Jocelyn in my AP Spanish Language and Culture class during her junior year. In class, Jocelyn is quiet, courteous, and focused, but when asked a question or asked to present, Jocelyn is quick to share her views and opinions. She's used to working within groups and being a calm leader, understanding the importance of listening to others before making decisions. Jocelyn values diversity and inclusion and has been a leader and advocate within our school. When Jocelyn saw the need to help newcomer students, she spoke, who speak limited English, excuse me, she initiated a series of conversations with peers and teachers that led to the formation of a student advisory committee. Jocelyn is also the president of the Future Female Leaders and a Secretary for the Rua Teens, which also focuses on serving the school community. From these words, it is clear to see that Jocelyn has made an indelible impact on the Spotswood Trailblazer community. She has chosen to use her time, energy, and voice to build a strong reputation among her teachers, administrators, and peers. I'm excited to see where her journey takes her, and I am eager to see the leader she will become. Jocelyn, congratulations on this well-earned recognition. Please know that we are very proud of you, and thank you for helping Spotswood to be a school where student voices are heard and valued. Congratulations, very proud of you.
So what do you plan on doing when you graduate?
Go to college.
Do you know where yet?
I don't know yet.
Don't know yet?
Yeah, figured it out.
That's alright, that's alright. You'll figure it out along the way. Thank you so much for all that you've done here at Spotswood. And can you tell us one more time what projects that you had that you came up with?
It was the Safe and Caring School Project that was led by Oscar Schike and Ms. Johnson, and we came up with the Student Advisory Committee that presents here sometimes as well.
Awesome, well, thank you for your work there. So do you have a family member here with you today?
Yeah.
Your parents, could parents, can you come up, can you come up here? We want to give you a certificate, the Klein's Dairy Bar, you know, we have one here in McGaughes we can go to, and a pen. But we also want to present, are you mom and dad?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Me too.
Matt Cross, nice to meet you.
Elise.
You've got a great daughter.
Thanks so much.
Yes, yes. We wanted, we want to present to you as a board tonight, school board, a certificate of recognition of your daughter's Character Counts Award. Something that you could put on the wall and be proud of for a very long time, so.
Oh yeah, I'll keep it forever.
Yeah, I know you will. Well, the board would like to greet you well as well if you would like to go by and greet them before you leave today.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Our second student we're going to recognize was unable to be here this evening. Again, being a valuable member of his community, he's actually at a dress rehearsal as a part of a commitment with the Shandor Children's Choir. But this is a family affair, so I'm going to ask his mom, Beth, to come and join me because Beth will be our volunteer recognition, so. Thank you, Beth. Spotswood High School is excited to present Aiden Cahill as a recipient of the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggedale Character Counts Award. During his time as a trailblazer, Aiden has demonstrated his abilities in the classroom and on the stage. He has represented himself and his family with honor and dignity as he worked to make Spotswood a school where all feel welcomed and valued. I have witnessed Aiden grow into a leader among his peers through his dedication to positive interactions with teachers and students alike. When asked to describe Aiden as a school citizen, words such as kind, encouraging, positive, leader, and helpful are consistently mentioned. English teacher Brian Baker shared, "He was an ideal English student, a ferocious reader, a skillful writer, and a thoughtful speaker. I was blown away by his performance in our theater department's presentation of Grease. It is hard to believe that one person can be so talented in so many areas. More important, though, is his dedication to the hours of rehearsal time. Despite his heavy course load, while trying to balance homework, family, and friends, Aiden spent afternoons, nights, and weekends rehearsing. This level of dedication also extends to the people in his life," which leads me to the qualities I find most important, his empathy and kindness. His relationships with his friends and family seem warm, thoughtful, and loving. He cultivates deep relationships based on mutual trust and true kindness. Maybe just as meaningful, he extends understanding to those around him, trying to understand where they're coming from even when they disagree with him. The ability to balance these relationships and social skills with his demanding schedule is astonishing trait to have. English teacher Charlene Schoenhardt and theater teacher Justine Mackey also rave about Aiden as a student and as a leader of his peers. Ms. Schoenhardt shared, "Aiden I had as a student during COVID. He is one of the very few students who would turn his camera on and interact. He taught me a lot about all things musical theater and was kind and encouraging to his classmates even though they wouldn't come on the screen. Aiden has been an excellent influence on the musical program at Spotswood and has helped his younger classmates acclimate to high school. He is always quick with a compliment or just a positive attitude. He's one of those students whom you wish you had ten of in class." Ms. Mackey shared, "Aiden is an exceptional leader within the Fine Arts Department here at Spotswood. He has not only starred in many roles at Spotswood, but has been a large part of the band and choir programs. He is always willing to help anyone in need and is one of the kindest, sweetest students to have graced the halls of Spotswood. Aiden has willingly given his time, talent, and energy to be a positive role model to many at Spotswood. Aiden is a living, the strong examples provided by his close-knit family. He truly understands that for a community to be successful, whether it be in the classroom or a theater troupe, all involved must work together for the common good. Congratulations to Aiden on this recognition, and thank you for being a valuable member of the Spotswood family." Yep. And part of the reason why he's so good is standing beside me. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Beth Cahill. We are pleased to honor her as our Trailblazer Volunteer of the Year. Beth has proven to be a valuable member of our fine arts community through her hours of dedication to ensure our students have what is needed to be successful. Beth's energy and enthusiasm are infectious as she builds connections with others. Her ability to be inclusive when working for the common goal of supporting the choir and theater programs has allowed our students to perform at both the state and national levels. Spotswood Theater teacher Justine Mackey shares his sentiment when stating, "Beth is one of the founding members of the Theater Booster Club here at Spotswood High School. Serving as the Theater Boosters' president and being an amazing mom to Aiden and Colin Cahill, she has spent countless hours and efforts in creating fundraisers, raising money, and supporting all the fine arts students in our community. In 2021, when the One Act Students won their state chapter select show, Elephant's Graveyard, Beth worked with the All-Star Theater Boosters to go on a fundraising promotional tour to ensure that all students who wished to travel to the National Thespian Festival were able." She continues, "No matter how wild, Beth was always supportive of my wild adventures in theater and helps to make sure each student has what is, has a way to be involved. Her leadership and guidance will surely be missed when her boys graduate this spring." You can still stay, though. Former choir teacher, excuse me, shared this about Beth. "Beth has always been a caring parent who puts the needs of all students first and supported me in making that possible. She not only is a great musician, but very organized and talented in designing playbills and programs. In my time at Spotswood, she was able to offer her help in many different ways and a variety of activities. She was a consistent supporter and participant in the choral boosters and the musical boosters. She and her husband Jim make a great team as they tirelessly work to support opportunities for their children while also supporting their educators. Her ability to stay level-headed and appreciative of what work has been done while also creating a supporting, and supporting new ways to build our programs is just what any school would want. Any great leader does so humbly, always with others in mind. Beth is no exception as she accepts this honor today. May all parents and students approach education with this mindset and eagerness for improvement and success. As a principal, the support from parent volunteers such as Beth is invaluable. For students and directors to shine during performances, many little things must be in place. Beth's skills and work ethic are greatly appreciated, and the Spotswood Fine Arts Community is blessed to have her and her family taking care of them." Congratulations and thank you, Beth.
Can we give one more hand for her? This is incredible. Thank you so much. Please tell Aiden to go back and watch the video and hear all the amazing things that his teachers had to say about him and his principal. But thank you so much. We wouldn't be able to do, the schools wouldn't be able to do what they do without parent volunteers like yourself. So thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the work that you've put in here at Spotswood High School, and this certificate is well, well-given to you tonight. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
I'll give it both of them there for him to give it as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We, the board would like to say thank you as well.
Again, thank you all for the opportunity to be the principal of Spotswood High School and for the opportunity to share such wonderful folks that we have in our school. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Our next presenter will be, it's here somewhere, Mr. Jay Kapuchek from Peak View Elementary School. And while he comes up, I do want to say, Ms. Cahill, thank you for your service, and I would like to point out, yes, you can stay once your kids graduate. If you stay around for highlights, you'll hear me talking about Jay Frank Hilliard, where I don't have kids either, so absolutely stay. It's great once your kids are gone, too. Okay, Mr. Kapuchek.
Awesome. Thank you all very much again. It was great to see Jocelyn, who has greeted our halls many times and volunteered at summer school and everything else, so it's nice to see students that come through Peak View eventually receiving awards here also at Spotswood. So again, Chair Lohr, members of the school board, Dr. Shiflett, it's with great honor to recognize one of our fifth grade students, Mr. Deacon Blosser. If you knew Deacon's teacher, as they said, they expected me to sing a song and dance while I'm up here, but I am not. But he was recognized by his fifth grade teachers, and she spelled it, Character Counts with the word letters, D-E-A-C-O-N. Never a day goes by that Deacon is not doing what he's supposed to even when others are not looking. He is always expressing gratitude. He offers authentic promises to his peers and adults alike. He cooperates with all. He keeps an open mind. He even sings his teacher's songs, all of them, and judging no one ever. Only positive things are coming from Deacon in the future, and we are very proud of Deacon and we are glad he is a part of our fifth grade team at Peak View. So Deacon, if you would, come on down.
Mr. Blosser, how are you tonight? Are you excited about getting this award tonight? I'm sure mom and dad's proud of you as well. Is mom and dad here with you tonight? Could you come on down, mom? We can recognize you and the work that you've put in. Will you give mom and dad a hand as well as they come? Our children learn from us at home, so for him to be such a good student at school, he's learning some good stuff at home, so thank you so much. There is, we have a recognition, certificate of recognition for you to hang up on your wall to remember this moment tonight, and a Klein's Dairy Bar gift certificate for you, Deacon, to have a good time with, okay? Thank you so much for all the positivity that you put in our schools, alright buddy? God bless you guys. Thank you so much. The board would like to recognize you as well, Deacon, and your family.
And next, we have Ms. Macy Neese. Macy, would you like to come down? Macy is being recognized by the fifth grade, fifth grade teachers at Peak View. When asked who to think of, it was very quick, they said Macy Neese. Macy is driven, she's diligent, she's responsible, hard-working, and she puts forth her best effort in everything she does, and she always asks help whenever she needs. Macy is constantly thinking of others and is always making sure that everyone feels included. She is supportive of her classmates and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She has taken part in this year's musical, the 101 Dalmatians, and is a library helper at school, and she's also a part of our very important job as our flag patrol. She's, she is the one that takes the flag up every morning and brings it down every afternoon. She exemplifies all the character count pillars on a daily basis and encourages others to do the same. So it is with great honor to have Macy standing beside me as a member of our fifth grade team, and there was no one else more deserving than Macy Neese. Macy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you know what you want to do when you grow up?
Honestly, I'm not, I'm still figuring it out, honestly. If I had to say, I'm going to be a masseuse when I grow up.
Okay, alright. Most girls know what they want to do by your age, so we are so proud of you and the character you display inside of our schools. Thank you for, for being kind, I heard that in there, and for raising the flag up and down. I was wondering when he said that, is she in fifth grade? And so he said he was in fifth grade as well. Is your mom and dad here with you tonight? Mom and dad, would you mind standing and coming down here as well? Can we give a hand for mom and dad for all they have done? So I want to give to you, mom and dad, a certificate of recognition for a character count that you can hang on the wall and frame it and remember this night as well, and I want to give you a gift card to Klein's, where you can go by there and get some ice cream, okay? And a lapel pin of the United States. So we're, are you excited about going to Montevideo next year?
Yes.
Yeah? What's the most exciting thing about going? Lockers.
Probably having a sports team.
Do you play sports?
No.
No, okay, alright.
I just watch them.
You just play, that's okay. My daughter does, too. So thank you so much for all you do in our schools, okay? And thank you, mom and dad, for raising such a fine young girl there. So with the board, we'd like to recognize you as well. Thank you, guys.
We're going to now move on to our Inspire Awards, and we're going to start with Jessica Clatterball, presenting to Jessica Ashby, a school counselor at Montevideo Middle School. And as you guys get to the podium, I would like to take a moment to thank DuPont Credit Union and the Rockingham Education Foundation for sponsoring these awards. I believe the Rockingham Educational Foundation also sponsored our Character Counts Awards as well, so we'd like to send out a great big thank you and shout out to them. Okay, and now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Clatterball.
Not a public speaker. Ms. Ashby helped my daughter Isabel get registered for school as a new student to the area. She was extremely proactive in communicating and following up with me to make sure that the process was easy and that both Isabel and I felt reassured and welcomed to the area. She even invited Isabel to visit her office and ensured that we knew that she would be an ongoing resource if Isabel had any concerns or questions while transitioning to a new school.
She's wonderful. I'd like to present you this award and gift certificate. Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 We did your favorite two and some chocolate. Thank you, Mr. Shiflett. We appreciate you. Okay. And I'm sorry, what was, what was his name?
Lucas.
Lucas. Thank you, Lucas, for coming and being here tonight and helping your mom present. And thank you, Mr. Shiflett, for being an outstanding teacher. We're going to now move on to Tammy Stone, and she will have recognition of the 2023 State Soil and Water Conservation Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Chairman Lure, board members, Spotswood community. I'm excited to recognize the 2023 State Soil and Water Conservation Teacher of the Year. It is from Lacy Spring Elementary, and it is Charlene Lance. If she could please come up, I'd like to tell you a little bit about her. Her principal is also here, so Tammy Mae, would you like to come up too? Okay. Just going to make you stand up here. So Charlene was recognized as the district and regional soil and water conservation teacher of the year, but now she's being recognized as the state conservation teacher of the year. She is very dedicated to environmental literacy and to keeping the garden vibrant and growing at Lacy Springs Elementary. For example, she'll spend countless hours during the summer organizing the garden either herself or organizing the volunteers and the parents and the community. So she interweaves environmental literacy into every student's experience at Lacy Springs, and we know that by connecting them to their environment, they're connecting them to their place. And so thank you very much for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. That's such a wonderful achievement, and thank you for spreading the news on environmentalism for our students. That's something that's really special to me. So thank you. I think now we're going to go to Dr. Shiflett for the V SBA awards.
Thank you, Chair Lure. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes school board members who grow professionally in their role as a board member by attending conferences and events. This year, Chair Lure and Mr. Matt Cross have earned the Award of Excellence. They both will receive a certificate and a silver pin. Vice Chair Dr. McQuilkin earned the Award of Distinction. Members who receive the Award of Distinction are also invited to a special luncheon at the upcoming V SBA conference in Williamsburg, and she will also receive a certificate and a starfish pen. Please join me in congratulating our three board members.
I'm not supposed to stand for this.
Absolutely.
I know, how do you get the starfish pen?
Sorry, Mr. Cross, it is not, but we'll make a note maybe next year.
That concludes recognition and presentations for the evening. We're now going to move into public comments. I'd like to take just a moment to remind folks that there are no outbursts from the audience. You'll have three minutes to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. You'll have a tone at 30 seconds left to go. And please follow character counts and keep your comments directed to the board as an entirety. Our first speaker will be Olga Gorbunova.
Good evening and thanks for having me. Let me introduce myself first. My name is Olga, and I'm the parent of Ali Alhawani, who is currently enrolled as a freshman at Spotswood High. I have concerns about the proposed redistricting plan, which if approved would have him move to Broadway High School. We already experienced one redistricting about five years ago, but that time Ali was in elementary school, and this transition didn't affect him because at that young age, it was less of an impact on him. But now we are talking about 15 years old teenagers, and it's an absolutely different story. We live at Cedar Point Lane. While looking for housing, we chose to buy a home at this area based on the school district. We were not randomly assigned to Spotswood. We intend to be in this district. Ali has formed relationships with his peers who are currently enrolled at Spotswood High. Removing him from his current school can be very disruptive and could essentially affect his mental health and academic progress. He is also part of a JMU upward bound program, a program that Broadway High is not currently a part of. This program is most important to us because we are preparing Ali for college. Changing schools at this age can have a variety of mental health effects on teens, including depression, anxiety, doubt, and low self-esteem. All these changes will affect a teen who is already working through the day-to-day challenges of going into adulthood. Our request would be for the school board to consider allowing currently enrolled students at Spotswood High to continue their education through graduation at Spotswood High. We would understand that transportation on school buses may not be an option, and we would be prepared to make alternative arrangements to get him in to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Holly, ooh, I'm sorry. Can you help me?
Holly Usdanovics.
Usdanovics. Thank you.
So I spoke at the last school board meeting on October 23rd. My family and I had moved at the end of May due to unfortunate circumstances. My dad is in stage four kidney disease, so we wanted to be close by. They live in the Rockingham County area, so that's where we chose to look for a home. I will say that we have moved from Buckingham County, which is a very diverse area. My kids are biracial, and in the Rockingham area, honestly, diversity is not a strong suit. But out of the four schools, or high schools, in this area, Spotswood was the most diverse and doesn't come close to where we came from. So not only that, academically, Spotswood rates the highest. It's number one in the Rockingham County area. So this redistricting forces us to move our children to a place that we did not have intentions of sending them. The last time I was here, I was told that our tax dollars would be raised if we had requested a new school. Now we're putting a price on uprooting my children within a year's timeframe. They don't deserve that. There's so much other things going on in this world to uproot them again. My daughter's going to be a senior this year, and I know that that means nothing to you all, but it means something to her to be able to finish her school year out and graduate and not have to graduate from another school. Not only that, when I left here at the last meeting, I was told I would receive an email. I never did hear from anybody on that school board meeting, which is sad, very sad. I was also told that the kids are resilient. They are. They're smart. I love my kids, and I love them with a passion. But there was also, after some research, I found that there was a plan, a Rockingham 2020 financial plan for the future. It never mentioned redistricting. It mentioned additions for schools, renovations. All of that would raise our tax dollars. But why isn't that being looked at now? Because just having to put a temporary fix on things by redistricting doesn't solve the larger problem. People are going to continue to move to the area. People are going to continue to grow their families. So I'm asking that we put this redistricting on hold, and let's think of what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments for the evening. We'll now move on to board member highlights, and we're going to start with Mr. Cross. Thank you. Mr. Falk? Mr. Dixon?
Wow, really? Y'all, that's okay, I got lots of highlights. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Chair Lure. My first highlight is the Unified Basketball, last game of the season, the final game of the season, which was a really joyful event with a lot of music and a lot of energy, was held on November the first, and we're sorry to see it end, but we're looking forward to next season. My second highlight is the Veterans Day Parade. Actually, it was a program with a parade around the school at Turner Ashby, and they had General Biedler, General David Biedler, speak, and he was a graduate of Rockingham County Schools, TA specifically, but he was the speaker, and I saw the faces of the veterans during that program, and I know that they very much appreciated it. And then my last highlight is that we will be, we will, that Jackie and I and Mr. Cross and Dr. Shiflett and I are all going to the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Conference in Williamsburg, and looking forward to gaining a lot of good information for our schools.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin.
So I was able to travel with J. Frank Hilliard Middle School to the National FFA Convention. We traveled by train and spent an entire week in Indianapolis, where I, two teams that I helped with for Ag Science Fair, one team that did food science placed third in the nation, and one team that I, that they were in Power Systems was the name of the division, and they checked the sharpening angles on chainsaws to see what was best, and they placed fifth in the nation. So that was super, super exciting. We also had other teams, I believe, the Dairy Evaluation Team from Broadway High School placed, was a gold rated team, and I believe they were top 10. I think Dr. Shiflett has more information about those. The E N R team, which I helped with a little bit, they placed, they had a silver rating, and I know there's some other teams, and hopefully Dr. Shiflett can help me refresh my memory on those. But it was a phenomenal week, lots of, it was 72,000 members, all wearing their blue jackets, and I realized I need to have my eyes checked because lots of people started looking alike by the end of the week. But it was just an amazing time, and it's always so good to see our young people be successful. And I do want to give a shout out to Ms. Tammy Stone for helping those students with their, the food science girls that placed third, had to do a titration of calcium in almond milk versus cow's milk, and Ms. Stone worked with us a lot to figure out how to make that work. So thank you for that. And then after spending a great week in Indianapolis, we had Election Day, and I'm just thankful that elections are over, and now we know what the future looks like, and I'd like to welcome Holly Cave, Sarah Horst, and Ashley Burgoyne, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to learn that by the end of the year. I would like to welcome them to the school board and look forward to working them, with them in the future. And then the end of last week, I was able to return to J. Frank Hilliard Middle School and celebrate our veterans. The kids made bacon and eggs and pancakes and served veterans, and then had a little memorial service for that, or a little honorary service for them in the auditorium, and that was just a wonderful way to, it was really neat to see kids, like, this is my granddad, he was in the Vietnam War, and being able to honor these gentlemen who I had heard stories from before they had these grandkids about how awful it was to come back from the Vietnam War. It's really nice to see their grandchildren being able to honor them in such a way. So those are my highlights for the week. Dr. Shiflett?
So since our last meeting, I did have an opportunity to attend the South River Fall Festival and Cub Run Elementary's Literacy Night, and both of those events were well-attended. And I always appreciate the effort that it takes our teachers and administrators to host such events. Takes hours of planning, hours of preparation for a two-hour, hour-and-a-half event, and then it's over. So that was really enjoyable. As Chair Lure indicated, I also attended the National FFA Convention, which is a great opportunity. I believe the one group we failed to mention was the MTC Ag Livestock Production, the Ag Production Course. Their livestock judging team was number three in the nation, which is pretty impressive. The FFA is the largest student organization in the United States, almost a million student members, not quite. So it's really impressive to see all those students. And then I also had an opportunity to be at Turner Ashby High School to see their Veterans Day celebration last Friday, and Dr. McQuilkin has already shared some of the details. It was very, very well-done. And again, another event that takes hours and hours of planning, but our veterans were so thankful, and many of them were thanking us, you know, "Thank you for doing this." And I said, "Look, this is a drop in the bucket to what sacrifice that you made. This is nothing planned in the event for all that you gave to us." So we always want to celebrate them. And so I started my day at TA, and then I ended my day, or my night, at TA. I attended the TA Heritage Football Game, and the Knights ended up getting the victory. And probably one of the highlights, though, is I've never had this happen before, as the game continued, the fog set in, and by the end of the game, you didn't know there was players on the field, you just couldn't see them, the fog was so thick. It was quite interesting. But it was a good game, and I guess there'll be a big matchup Friday night, they tell me. I don't know, maybe Spotswood and TA, is that what's happening? So anyway, it's been, it's been great to be out in the schools. I always love getting out. Dr. Otifer and Mrs. Abernathy and Caitlin and Justin helped us, and Amy Painter delivered lunches to our kids for the attendance last week, and they really enjoyed it and had a chance to talk to some of those students. And so anytime I can be in a school, seeing students, working with students, that's a highlight for me. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. And yes, thank you. I don't know why I forgot MTC, but Sarah Cron placed third individually. So that was, that was quite an achievement for her, and I definitely wanted to say, give her a shout out as well. This concludes board member comments for the evening. We're going to move on to action items, and the first action item we have is to approve the minutes as presented. Members, do you have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the bills and mileage. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lure and board members, I recommend approval of the October bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do you have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the October bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. All those in favor, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the bills and mileage as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, field trips. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lure and board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. East Rockingham High School, Honors Choir, November 16th through the 18th, one student, Richmond, Virginia. TSA Leadership Academy, November the 17th through the 19th, eight students, The Hartfield, Virginia. J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, the FFA Chesapeake Bay Foundation, November the 27th through the 29th, 26 students, The Smith Island, Virginia. Spotswood High School, One Act Competition, November the 17th through the 18th, 24 students, Lynchburg, Virginia. And Turner Ashby High School, FFA, February 3rd through the 4th, Highland Retreat, Burke, 16 students, Highland Retreat, Burke, Virginia. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do you have a motion?
Yes, I approve, I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve these field trips.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. All those in favor, he beat you to it. Is there any discussion regarding field trips? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, budget amendment. I believe Mr. Justin Morris, Moyers, oof, I can't do names tonight, words are hard. Mr. Moyers, please.
Good evening, Chair Lure, members of the board. Dr. Shiflett, this evening before you, I have a budget amendment for your approval. This amendment will appropriate additional state funds that we received to the amended budget for a 2% salary increase as of January 1st, 2024. Do you have any questions?
Members, questions? None, no? Great. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lure and board members, I recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented by Mr. Moyers.
Thank you. Members, do you have a motion?
So will.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote to approve the budget amendment as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Ms. Tammy Stone with a local challenge plan.
Good evening again. Attached to your board docs is a requested update to the Rockingham County Local Challenge Plan. This plan needs to be updated based on a review to align to the VDOE challenge and gifted requirements. It's just a very small tweak and a little bit of language to meet with that, so I'm seeking approval for that. Thank you. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lure and board members, I recommend approval of the updated Rockingham County Local Challenge Plan as presented by Mrs. Tammy Stone.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do you have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation regarding the updated Rockingham County Local Challenge Plan.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on that. Okay. We are just clicking right along, aren't we, folks? That concludes our action items for the evening. We'll move on to our information items and the 2023-24 Accreditation Report by Ms. Cheryl Estep.
Chair Lure, Dr. Shiflett, and members of the board, I'm pleased to present our Division's Accreditation Report with you. Virginia's accreditation system measures performance on multiple school quality indicators. Each school quality indicator is rated at one of the following levels. Level one, which indicates performance is or at above state standards. Level two, where performance is near the state standard, and level three, where performance is below the state standard. Schools with all quality indicators at either level one or level two are accredited. Schools are also accredited if they are in a triennial accreditation period. If a school has any If a school has any indicator at Level 3, it will be designated as accredited with conditions. The final rating of accreditation denied is given if a fail of school fails to adopt or fully implement required corrective actions to address Level 3 indicators. Eighty-nine percent of Virginia's public schools are accredited for the 22, excuse me, the 2023-2024 school year. In Rockingham County, all 23 of our schools are accredited. The academic achievement indicators for English, Math, and Science include the SOL results for all students. In Rockingham County, 19 schools achieved a Level 1 in English, 23 schools achieved a Level 1 in math, and 12 schools achieved a Level 1 in science. The achievement gap indicators in English and math include SOL results for subgroups of students. The subgroups included are Asian, Black, White, Economically Disadvantaged, English Learners, Hispanic, Multiple Races, and Students with Disabilities. For the achievement gap indicator, Rockingham County has 15 schools at Level 1 for English and 16 schools at Level 1 for math. The final group of school quality indicators address student engagement. They are chronic absenteeism, dropout rate, the graduation and completion index, and the career, college career and civic readiness index. These tables show the numbers of schools in the state and in the division that earned Here is a chart of the state and division on-time graduation rates. This year, the division's graduation rate was 94.4%, and the rate for Virginia was The dropout rate is not the inverse of the on-time graduation rate. In addition to graduates and dropouts, a cohort includes students who completed high school with a GED, students on long-term medical leave, students who completed high school without earning a state-recognized credential, and students who are still enrolled. Here are the dropout rates for the state and the division for 2022-2023 school year. As we work to continue to improve, we are using the data received from our accreditation results to help identify areas of focus for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Members, do you have any questions?
Back on to Slide 7, when it talks, it says...
I'm sorry, um, the dropout rates? That is for the division, our overall dropout rate for the, for the year. Yes.
Four students or...
It's all four high schools.
Yeah, all four high schools, the students, yes. Mm-hmm.
What gets us into, on the chronic absenteeism on that one? What gets us into Level 2?
Um, I believe Marcy Sherky's gonna be going into detail...
I figured that would be coming up here.
On that, um, yes.
Okay. Great. So, I will just hold that question for Marcy.
Okay.
Board Members, any further questions? Okay, great.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you all very much.
Just thank you. And now, Marcy Williams.
I hope I can answer my question.
Please come up and explain the chronic absenteeism to us.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chair Lohr, Dr. Shiflett, and school board members. Yes, I am here today to follow up Cheryl's presentation and to explain a little further about what our division is doing to improve chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined by the state as any student who misses 10% or more of the school days in which he or she is enrolled. Rockingham County's school calendar has students enrolled 175 school days for this current school year. Therefore, if a student is enrolled in Rockingham County for the entire year, he or she could miss, if he or she misses 17 or more days, they're considered chronically absent. And that does mean 17 of any type of absences, excused, unexcused, unverified. That equates to about two days a month. So, as she mentioned, the levels of schools that we have, we currently have, in her presentation, she noted that, you can see on this slide, that we have six elementary schools that are at Level 1. And to be at Level 1 means that 15% or fewer of your students were chronically absent. We have one high school and three middle schools and six elementary schools that are at Level 2. Level 2 means you have between 16 and 25% of your students chronically absent. And then, we have three high schools and one middle school that are below the state benchmark at Level 3, which means you have greater than 25% of your students chronically You may be wondering what impact, what got us here? What impact did COVID have on all of this? So, I provided a slide for you here where I picked four schools and gave you the data for the last three years leading into the COVID year. I chose the three, excuse me, I chose the three high schools that were at Level 3, Broadway, East Rock, and Spotswood. The one elementary, the one middle school, Elkton Middle School, was at Level 3. And then, a few of our Level 2 elementary schools this year. And you can see for three consecutive years leading into COVID, we were well below the 15%. We were all Level 1 everywhere. So, what are we going to do to fix this problem? Well, to begin with, our division has put a few simple steps in place that we're already seeing some positive outcomes. Starting on the first day of school, a student was not counted as absent unless he or she was present. In the past, we had this practice in place in our schools, and just in recent years did we change that practice. A return to this practice allows for those students who may, for whatever reason, maybe they're late, taking a later vacation in the summer, maybe they've moved and changed schools, but whatever the reason, they're not counted absent until they are actually present. You can see on the first day of school, that affected 387 students in our division. On day 2, that affected 234, and then on day 3, 184. So, these are students that didn't count against chronic absenteeism for their individual schools, and this is an allowable practice by the Virginia School Board Association. Likewise, we have now been allowed to grant students an acceptable period of time to receive a second or third shot in a series of immunizations. Therefore, if a child has started their series of a particular immunization, that child is allowed a grace period of starting school as long as he or she has an appointment to obtain that shot within 90 days. This was a huge impact for our elementary schools, where children have a number of immunization that requires multiple shots. At the school level, the strategies for dealing with chronic absenteeism was determined to be mainly about communication, to make parents aware that we no longer are under the rule, "When in doubt, keep 'em out." But rather, let's communicate, especially with the school nurse, and determine if a child should be in school. For some students, especially at the middle and high school, it was also about changing the mindset of the student, as some were feeling that it was okay to stay home and that they really wouldn't get much question about that. You can see from this list some of the strategies that were used. Schools sent home notes to families in the late summer informing them about what chronic absenteeism was. High schools have implemented the discretion of placing students on poor school standing when the absences are accumulating and not, and are seen as abusive. Also, we've posted information in the radio, the television, on our website to inform parents about chronic absenteeism. And as mentioned just a few minutes ago, our superintendent got on board as well, and he had demonstrated the importance of attendance and challenged students to have perfect attendance in the first month of school. And for a selected group of students from that group that had perfect attendance, there was a lunch sponsored for those. Finally, we made contact with our physicians in the area, and we asked for their partnership as they treat patients to get them back to school as soon as medically appropriate. I'm happy to say that we're already seeing positive results, and if I could ask that the link be clicked there, that will share a spreadsheet with you that shows what I am referencing here. Hopefully, you can see that. As you can see here, we have collected some data to show that after the first two months of school, some schools are already showing significant decline in the number of students that are chronically absent, especially for those schools that are Level 2 and Level 3. If you look in the blue column, that was where schools ended last year. If you look in the yellow column, that is where they're at, at Month 2 of the school year. Research has told us that the first two months of school has a direct correlation to which students will be chronically absent. So, we feel pretty positive about the data that's coming in at this point. To speak specifically to a couple of schools, you'll see Broadway High School, which ended last year at 28%, is looking at 14% now. East Rock, which ended at 36%, looked at 20% at the end of October. In conclusion, I want to say that all of our Level 2 and Level 3 schools are looking at their data monthly. They continue to work to improve these percentages until we return to a time when all of our schools are at Level 1. In the meantime, I'm asking that the board let me know if this report is helpful to you and how frequent you would like to see this update. I could provide it to you monthly, I could provide it to you at the end of the nine weeks or at semester break. I'd be happy to, to share this with you as often as you feel necessary, if Dr. Shiflett can give me direction on that after the meeting. Thank you, and do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you very much. Board Members, do you have questions? I just want to be crystal clear, because I get this question from time to time. School-related absences, like the week that we spend at national convention, do not count towards this number.
Correct.
But, um, any absences that, like, if, if I want to take my child on a cruise, or if they're sick, those numbers count against it.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We have, we have codes that are put in as present codes and codes that are in as absent code. The only present code, of course, is being there. Then, school-related and homebound, if you've been approved to be on a homebound services, are our present codes.
So, our very ill children become homebound, and then they, that doesn't count against them either?
Correct.
Well, that's good to know. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you so much for doing this for us. And kids, get to school, it's important to be there. Next item on the agenda is school enrollment projections. Um, I just promoted you now, I just can't get your name right at all today.
I will never be a doctor, that I can assure you. But I have enjoyed all these analytics and spreadsheets tonight, the accountant, he really enjoys that. So, I had the pleasure of speaking to you tonight about the student generation rate, which you may be asking what that is. So, this has been used to estimate the impact that new development has on Rockingham County Schools' student population. So, back in 2018, a spreadsheet was created with, in partnership with Rockingham County Community Development to calculate the impact based on which type of residential development is being proposed at the time. The spreadsheet takes the number of total housing units in the county by type and the total number of students in each housing unit, and then we create a ratio to determine the generation rate of that student per one unit of housing type. So, this is information from the spreadsheet that we are using currently from 2022. So, you can see that there's 37,653 total housing units and a total of 11,636 students, and that includes pre-K. And then, you can also see all the other types of housing stock, how we split it up between single-family dwellings, duplexes, townhomes, apartments, and then mobile units, and then the type, the number of students in each of those houses, residential units currently. So, we take those numbers, we divide them, and then we come up with the generation unit per house. So, overall, one residential unit in the county would generate .31 of a student grades pre-K through 12. A single-family dwelling would be .32, a duplex is .26, a townhome is .37, an apartment is .11, and then a mobile home is .38. So, for example, if community development comes to us and said that Land Development LLC is going to build 200 townhomes, we would estimate that at a .37 generation rate, that's 74 additional students to our schools, and that could be pre-K through 12. Now, we take this into more detail so we can get school-specific, but we calculate the housing stock and the generation rate for every school attendance area, and therefore, we're able to use a calculation zone previously for each school. So, for example, if we had somebody come in and they were going to propose 200 single-family dwellings in the John Whalen, Wilbur Pence, and Turner Ashby attendance area, that would generate an estimated 30 elementary students, 14 middle school students, and then 20 high school students. Now, moving forward, we continue to update the formula to reflect the most current housing and student data. So, right now, currently, community development is updating the information for 2023, based on all developments that have taken place and the number of students that are living there. We reviewed the data for outliers, where maybe the formula isn't working out right, and we, so we try to keep that in the back of our mind when new developments come up to say, "Okay, typically, this generates a .25, but maybe development similarly two years ago was a .5." We'll take that into consideration when we comment to Rockingham County. And then, third, we are monitoring all current developments so that we have a better understanding of the total impact on school populations from five years to 10 years from now. So, when a rezoning takes place, Rockingham County reaches out to us and says, "What do you think, what kind of impact will this have on the schools in that area?" And we will take a look at that, and we'll use the spreadsheet along with some, you know, prior information of what we think will happen. We give those comments, and then they can use that when they have their rezoning applications and it goes to their board. At the same time, we are trying to now take into account what they've approved in those areas over the last three or four years, so we can say, "This may generate 30 students, but you've also approved three others in the same area that may generate another 60 or 70." So, keep that in totality in mind when we're thinking about this. And it makes it very difficult, because no one ever knows how long it's going to take for a development to finish, right? Sometimes, they approve these things and they sit for 10 years and nothing's done, and sometimes, they are done in six months. And so, it, it makes it very difficult. But we, we work very well with community development, we're in constant communication with them, and so, it's been a really good partnership. And then, so that is all I have to go over that this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board Members, any questions?
Thank you. Are you guys, do you guys meet with them pretty often, or how often do you guys meet with planning or community development?
We haven't met recently, just because there's nothing that's come up to them that they needed our input on. But we talk every few weeks when things are coming up, and they're currently working on the new spreadsheet, so they've, they're working on that for us, because we give them the student data, but they have to write all the housing information, right? So, they're currently working through that, and they have some ideas of some things we can maybe tweak to make it more accurate in some situations, and so, we're working with them on that now.
And Dr. Shiflett, is, Spotswood is on the list for 2018 for reconstruction and updates and stuff, is that it, or what year is it? I'm sorry, 28th, sorry.
Yeah. So, I believe, and we'll share later, I guess, once it gets finalized from the Board of Supervisors, the capital improvement plan. I believe Spotswood, I think, is in the fourth year of that five-year plan.
Yeah, starting four years from now.
So, starting four years from now.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Any further questions? Thank you for all of your work on this.
Yeah.
I think in the past, we just kind of used to guess, and this data-driven model, I think, gives us much more accurate information. And it, but it takes a lot of work from folks, so I appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, and as we've talked, it's an estimate, right? So, there's outliers. Sometimes, you'll put this in, and we're way high, and sometimes, you put in, we're low, but on the county as a whole, the information is correct. And so, the big... And so the big thing we can do is always update it annually with the county to make sure we're using the most updated information that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Members, you have the financial review and the VSBA Capital Conference information in your folders for your review. And then that will conclude our information items for the evening. We're going to move on to other business with school board questions and comments. Mr. Cross?
I have much to say. I just wanted to, we had two parents and I set up with about our redistricting, and just to give an idea, I'm, I believe the board, we're going to be looking at some grandfathering options and things like that, so I don't want you to leave here tonight with no hope of going home that that's not happening, so, but I'm, we're trying our best to make sure that I'm, we can address your needs as parents for your children as well. So, it's never fun to do the redistricting, because so many kids enjoy the schools they want you to go to. And so, but we are working on this, and hopefully we'll get back to both of you on, on this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Falk? Mr. Dixon? Dr. McQuilkin?
I would like to just comment on the, the recognitions that were given this evening, and one word just kept coming up, and that word is kindness. And we really are glad to, to recognize and to see that our students and our, and everybody is kind, because that, that helps make things go along more smoothly. And so we, we thank you all for that.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have any students? It looks like we have quite a few students. All I'm asking you to do is raise your hand and acknowledge that your student's here tonight. Look at all those students, wow! And are the majority of, okay, show of hands, who's from Spotswood? All of you. Okay, is there anybody from the other, any of the other schools tonight? Yay you! Thank you all for joining us tonight. I hope you found it rewarding, I hope you've learned some stuff. And just welcome, thank you for being here, because you guys are the reason that we are here. We are here to serve you also, and to make sure that you have an excellent education. So thanks for being here. I think that's all I have. Dr. Shiflett, do you have anything?
No, thanks, I'm good.
Great. We will now move, we have reason to go into closed session. Members, do I have a motion to move into closed session?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation, and A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I just want to thank you all for coming tonight, please have safe travels home, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we'll see you after that. All those in favor, please say, we're not done yet, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Now we're in closed session. Thank you, and have a wonderful night.